Excuse me.
I'm gonna call a meeting order.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I will call the meeting to order at seven o'clock for the Wednesday, May twenty eighth, twenty twenty five Planning Commission meeting, and we'll do a roll call.
Leanne Kesch Marsky, White Oak Drive.
Dennis Ferraro, Eagles Ness Road.
Patrick Cody, Lake and Chasna.
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Linda Winslow, Norwood Street.
Eric Power, Staff Planner.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Minutes from the previous meeting of April twenty third, twenty twenty five.
Move to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, public comment. Anyone wishing to come forward now can speak now or wait till any agenda item that's coming up? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to new business, six A. Special use permit public hearing number zero five two eight two five dash one. Proposed short-term rental land use to be located on a property located within the urban residential district. Parcel tax ID is five two zero eight three five zero zero five nine zero zero. The applicant is Thomas Fountain, twenty one eighty three Cherry Street in Marquette. Eric, have anything to add?
Yes, so this is a complete special use permit application for a short-term rental. I will clarify right off the bat that the address listed under the applicant on this agenda item is his residence address, whereas the subject property is a neighboring property adjacent to this, adjacent to his resident, his primary residence. So this is a map, our zoning map, a small, pretty small blue star is located within that UR, urban residential yellow district, but this is just showing the general location. I do have a little bit better maps here, so that on the left is that property report showing aerial of the property, pretty tree-covered, so it's kind of hard to see on that. And then on the right there is the applicant's narrative, which is included in your packet. And speaking with the applicant, like I said, he lives on the property immediately north, is that correct, of this one?
It's on the south side.
The, the subject property's on the south side of you.
South side, yeah, oh yeah, I live up on the south side, right across the line.
Yeah, so he lives immediately adjacent, sounds like he's been putting quite a bit of work into the property. It has been used as a long-term rental up until this point, currently vacant with the work going on. Here is a submitted kind of site plan showing estimated setbacks from property lines. Couldn't tell you when the house is built, but obviously existing structure, so it meets all setbacks as required under the current ordinance, but those are things that we can change, so. Other than that, I really don't have anything to add. The applicant is here tonight to answer any questions. This is included, just for your reference, showing the green, showing all approved short-term rentals in the Trobridge Park area, red being the pending one that's before you tonight. I've also got a map similar to this for that next one, the next item on our agenda, which is a short-term rental on five fifty, so. Here's the most up-to-date map we have. That list that we were discussing right before the meeting is also in your packet. And other than that, I'd be open to answer any questions, otherwise.
Any written communications come in at all?
Nope.
Anyone have any questions for Eric? Before we move further? Okay, Mr. Fountain's here, would you like to add anything before we get going here?
Well, I think you've read my, you know, part of my application that, that I sent in, but I'm here if anybody had any concerns. I have, I don't know if I can stand up, I guess, I've never been to this, but I have, I live right on the property, so I'm close to seeing everything happens. I, for the last six years, I've been doing short-term rental business, and I get like close to a five-star rating, and all my neighbors, nobody's had any complaints. There's, if there's a noise restriction, we put it in place. I have not ever had an issue. Sort of was concerned getting into it, is somebody gonna use it as a party house or something like that? You have to be at least twenty-five age to rent from Airbnb or VRBO. So, kind of cuts out, you know, some of the younger crowd. And I live right there, and in the policy, there's no parties. There is, you know, a noise ordinance set in at whatever time, you can stay out, sit on the deck, and enjoy the property. But, you know, there's certain guidelines that we lay in there, and, you know, if the police have to be called, then they get fined from whatever they get there and through VRBO, so. Just in case I'm not around at the time when something goes on. So, if anybody has any concerns or questions for me, I'm right here.
Any questions right now?
Have you talked to the neighbors around?
I've gone around, I've talked to Tony. I've gone pretty much door to door within the three hundred or so people that would have gotten the letter, and I didn't get in touch, worked on it for a while. I got probably every house except for maybe two or three, and everybody, everybody was like, knew what I was doing, and they were all for it. They said, we don't have any objections. I said, well, you'll get a letter, and if you have questions, come on up, so they're all good.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, let's open the public hearing at seven oh seven. Anyone wishing to come forward can come now, come up now and state your name and address, please. Okay, I don't see anyone coming forth. So, last chance. All right, let's close the public hearing at seven oh eight. And Commissioners, what do you think?
I know it always looks on that map that there's a lot of green dots, but this is the area in our township that has a lot of rooftops as well. It's like the racial aspect of it, Jason usually tells us it's still pretty much in line.
Yep, I mean, just again, for eyeballing kind of the density of it, there's really no green dot immediately. Certainly on the block, but immediately around it either, so.
I guess I did have one question, we always ask all the applicants. Are there numbers on the house for the address?
Yes, it's supposed to be right by the door, twenty one eighty-two Waldo, and we have the photos in, you know, their directions to get there, so that's not a problem. They won't be wandering around, they shouldn't have an issue. And as far as, part of our policy, I don't believe we're gonna have pets at that location, so.
I did drive by there tonight, has a brand-new driveway. It looks like a very nice family home.
Yep, it's very well-maintained.
Mm-hmm.
Both, both homes, so I don't, I don't really have any issues with anything, because the neighbors don't either, so. Anyone wanna make a motion or discussion further?
I'll make a motion that we approve the special use permit. Should I state that number?
Please, yeah.
For zero five two eight two five dash one, which is for twenty one eighty-two Waldo Street, as a short-term rental.
I'll support that.
Any further discussion? All right, we'll do the roll call vote. Leanne?
Aye.
Uh, Denny?
Yes.
Uh, Daphne?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Jim is the yes also. So, that's unanimous, Lee?
I will follow up tomorrow or Friday with kind of next steps, so.
Sounds great.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thanks for coming. All right, six B. Special use permit public hearing request. Proposed short-term rental land use to be located on a property located within the scenic residential zoning district. Parcel tax ID is five two zero eight one three two zero one eight zero zero. The applicant is Jason Howes, eight twenty-eight County Road, five fifty in Marquette. Eric?
Yep, so this is a complete special use permit application for a short-term rental in the, in the five fifty area, on five fifty Road. Just, the property itself is just, and you can see on this aerial map, so just a disclaimer, these parcel lines as shown, the red line around the property and then the black lines otherwise, are certainly not aligned with the structures as you see them. So, it shows there is kind of either bisecting that structure or splitting those two structures on the north side, so these parcel lines are not accurate. But that driveway just to the north is the newer county Sugarloaf parking lot. So this is the property immediately to the south of it. Some of you may remember that this same property owner requested before the commission a special use permit for a short-term rental, I believe, in twenty twenty-two, which was denied by the Planning Commission at that time. As we were talking about right before the meeting, the details on that, I can certainly provide more. Should you schedule the public hearing tonight, I can provide more details on that at that meeting. Being that this is just a request to schedule, application is complete. The property is eligible, as it's been more than the one year that we prescribed in the ordinance that denied applicant must wait before reapplying again. So, all requirements are met as far as the application goes, so staff would recommend scheduling it for Wednesday, June twenty-five at seven PM.
So is this a different owner now?
No, same owner.
Why is it a different name?
Uh, because I believe Jason Howes and Shannon Fisher.
That's my, that's my ex-wife.
Yeah, so it was.
So it's a different owner now?
Oh, yeah.
I guess we, we owned it together, but in the divorce, that's my sole property now.
Okay.
And then kind of backtracking here, but here's that same map that I showed for Trobridge with the green. The green concentrate, the green dot concentration on the kind of the south side, that is right around Phil's five fifty store, as you can imagine, kind of the more dense area of five fifty, and then a couple just to the south of the proposed, and then the proposed shown in red.
Do you remember anything about that, Rudolph Hand, or were you here then? And I don't think you were here.
From what I recall, it was, I think, substantial neighbor opposition. I do know the applicant has done some pretty extensive outreach to the neighbors that both were in opposition to it, as well as just neighbors in general, in response to that denial, as he very well detailed in his application. And then there was also at your spot, not included in the packet, but is in addition under this item, a sample of the letter that he, or email, however it was distributed, I don't know, but a sample of that letter that was sent to the neighbors. And that would be in addition to what the township sent to the neighbors as required by state law. Or, excuse me, we haven't done that yet, but this will be in addition to that, I should say.
Jim?
Yes.
Are we allowed to ask the applicant questions at this hearing?
As, as far as I'm aware, yes.
Sure.
As far as I'm concerned, yes.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, we can talk to him. Hey, my name's Jason.
For the record, identify yourself.
Yeah, Jason Howes, eight twenty-eight County Road, five fifty.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. So, do you remember why?
Oh, I remember.
What can you tell us, why this was denied the first time?
Yes.
Why, what things have changed that make it acceptable now that, in the eyes of the Planning Commission, we're not acceptable there?
Yeah, so at the time, I had just moved back to Marquette. My wife and I, we were in the rental business as well, and we were new. You know, every, every township and county kind of has different rules and ordinances with the STRs, so we, we had moved back and we had applied to turn this into an STR, and I, I just, I wish my neighbor would have spoken with me, I wasn't aware how upset he was, but, I mean, he doesn't like the Smith gravel lot across the street, he doesn't like the Sugarloaf parking lot, he doesn't like the mine trucks going up and down five fifty. I mean, he just really, he doesn't like a lot of the, he's been there a long time, he doesn't like the changes that he's seen happen. So he was very adamantly against having this be a rental. Now, his letter was like, there's gonna be snowmobiles and bonfires and parties. I mean, this, this is my personal residence, those concerns are my concerns as well. And since then, I've actually gotten to know Robert, we've had several conversations, and as I mentioned, I went through divorce, so we had a few different properties, my wife got some. This, this is now my personal property, I mean, I live here year-round. And it's not my, this time that I'm, I'm reapplying, I'm not looking to turn this into a rental. We have a family camp and halfway off of five fifty, I do some travel for work. In the time that I've owned it, I have rented to some traveling nurses, but in accordance with Marquette Township policy, that's been for ninety days or more. And, and it's been rented successfully, like, you know, I've spoken with Robert and the neighbors, and they, they haven't had any issues. But now, you know, I, I do leave for a month sometimes traveling, I'd like to be able to, not everybody wants to rent their personal home, but this is something I'd like to be able to do. And if I left for a month, you know, and I was only gonna rent for thirty days, I would need this short-term license. So, that's kind of my motive this time, reapplying. And I have spoken with the county who owns the parking lot. The Robinsons across the street said, yeah, go ahead. Mark Ronson across the street said he'd be fine. Neil Nikinen behind me said he would also be fine. And I did speak with Robert, and, I mean, he reiterated those concerns to me. And, and you know, I know him a little bit better now, like I said, it's like, I don't want people trespassing or making noise, or I don't even have a fire pit, this is my personal house. So, I, I very much, you know, make sure, I screen renters that come through. The other gentleman spoke about, you know, kind of an age limit. Generally, I like to find young professionals that are coming through Marquette that might need a place to stay for a month, so. At the end of my conversation with Robert, he said he wouldn't oppose me this time on the application, so. I think the last time, it ended up, the vote went two to two, you know, which is not a majority, so it ended up, my application failed the last time, so. I've been in touch with Eric a lot, and, yeah, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
I have one question.
Sure.
At the time of your last application, was this place on five fifty your primary residence?
It was not at the time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
At the time, we, we had lived on Crescent Street, and that's, she got that house in the split, and so this is now my permanent residence, but, yeah, as, as I explained, I would like the opportunity and the flexibility to rent for under ninety days in the event that I was traveling for work or at my camp.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay, thanks for your time. Thank you.
Any other points of discussion here, Frank, anyone? Nope. Anyone with a motion?
I move to approve the request for a public hearing or the proposed short-term rental, I subscribe, and item six B is.
I'll cycle that.
For June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, I'm sorry.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, all set?
Thank you.
I'll follow up.
Thank you.
Either tomorrow or Friday with more information. Yep.
Six C, backyard chicken report. Eric?
So, included in your packet tonight, I haven't been at the previous meeting, or maybe two meetings, but I understand that this topic came up. This is one of those, along with like short-term rentals and cannabis and ABUs. It's one of those kind of hot topics in planning. Allowing residents and property owners the flexibility to keep backyard chickens on their property within, within reason. So included in your packet tonight is a report that kind of details municipality by municipality in the area, what they do in regards to keeping chickens. I do note, kind of in that background section, that most municipalities that address it included under kind of an animal-keeping catch-all, that includes honeybees and rabbits, and I'll kind of come back to that in a little bit. They, almost all ordinances address kind of the proper storage of feed, fertilizer, animal feed, waste, things like that. And then, kind of right in line with that, keeping animal structures in roaming areas in a secure and sanitary condition, so we don't have chickens that are roaming property to property, and enclosures that are well-kept and clean. I do make note there that there are a few townships in Schoolcraft County that don't make any mention of this, and we do have mention of it currently. We do not allow it at all in urban residential, and we do allow it with a special use permit in rural residential and scenic residential. I will note that with our special use permit requirements, that requires a public hearing, and most, if not, this is gonna sound wrong, none, almost none of these municipalities had a public hearing requirement for these chickens. During my work, kind of just another example, I guess, during my work in Grand Rapids, an application was acquired to keep backyard chickens, and then adjacent neighbors were directly notified of the application. They didn't have approval or denial power over that application, but they were directly notified and given the opportunity to weigh in or give their comment on it. So these, again, information included for you tonight. I will note that Denny did make us aware of a couple of bills before the Michigan legislature that would override proposed bills. Right now, I think both, last I checked, are still sitting in committee. So as far as the process and timeline on those, whether they would be enacted into law or not, kind of up in the air, but they would preempt local zoning, and they do state explicitly that they make kind of guidelines very similar to some of these ordinance as far as you're allowed four chickens per every quarter acre, no more than sixteen, there's some stuff like that. So, further information on those two bills can certainly be provided at a future meeting. But kind of getting back to the animal-keeping catch-all, which would include honeybees and rabbits, those, as I recall, those bills do not make mention of either of those, and so by still, and Denny brought up the point in an email to Jason and I, that if we go forward with exploring these ordinance amendments and that those two bills are enacted into law, that preempt the ordinance, it's kind of time-wasted, that whole deal. But considering that, at least I would be of personal belief that we would include both honeybees and rabbits in any ordinance amendment to kind of avoid having to recircle back on those when somebody brings up, hey, I wanna keep rabbits, why don't you have any ordinance language about it? So, I think it's worth continuing, continuing to explore this, but we certainly need to keep in mind the action, proposed action at the state level, so.
Denny, and so do you?
Yeah, I, when you weren't at the meeting where Jason brought this up, and when he brought it up, he brought it up as a, mentioned, as you did, that right now, we allow this as a special use in certain districts, but not in heavily populated residential districts like Trobridge Park. I voiced some concerns at the time, but I, there was a discussion, and it seemed like the Planning Commission was open to going ahead with it for a special use permit for Trobridge Park, for example. So I said, fine, I would not oppose it and support it. However, I was aware at the time that there was a legislation pending in the state legislature, and there's two bills. One of them is, I didn't make copies of both of them. One of them is House Bill four oh four nine, and the other is House Bill four oh five oh. Four oh five, four oh four nine would amend the Zoning Enabling Act to specifically state that this would be a permitted use throughout the state in any residential area, in any area, that it would not, the zoning board or the Plan Commission could not make it a special permitted use, or in any way limit the use. And House Bill four oh four nine is interlocking with House Bill four oh five oh. House Bill four oh five oh seeks to amend, seeks to incorporate the language from four oh five, four oh four nine, and four oh five oh seeks to amend the Right to Farm Act, and it would make the raising of backyard chickens subject to the Right to Farm Act. So, what this really means, and I, I, as I stated in my email to you and to Jason, and I copied Jim, but I did not copy the other members of the Planning Commission because they didn't want to violate the Open Meetings Act law. But I, I think that if we're gonna go ahead with this, then we should immediately send a letter from the Planning Commission, and I imagine Mr. Johnson would be going to sign this, send it to our representative, Carl Bonak, as well as Senator Ed Mickbroom, and copy to all the sponsors of this bill, and it was sponsored by Senator Sonos, or Representative Sonos, and Marketing joined in, but there was a couple others that joined in. Anyway, I think we should send them a letter saying we oppose House Bill four oh four nine, and House Bill, we oppose House Bill four oh five oh because we consider it an infringement on the right of the Planning Commission under the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act to regulate this. The, I find this particularly troublesome, because, you know, we, this is just a slippery slope. There, you know, there's, there's bills pending from the legislature now to regulate gravel pits, take the powered regular gravel pits away from the Planning Commission. So I think we should oppose this, and we can go ahead with the working on the ordinance, I don't have any problem with that. But this is, if you look at the, well, first of all, I disagree with one thing you said, Eric, because this, the provisions of this bill would actually conflict. It's, it says that the property must be at least a quarter acre in size, the number of hens would not exceed five hens for every quarter acre, or a total of twenty-five hens, whichever is less. That conflicts with almost every one of these local ordinances that are, are neighbors. So that's one thing, but the other thing that I think is particularly offensive about this is that by making it part of the Right to Farm Act, it gives complete control to the Director of the Department of Agriculture and the Commissioner of the Department of Agriculture. of Agriculture and the commissioner of the Department of Agriculture. And if any zoning bodies such as ourselves wanted to make any tiny adjustment to any of these ordinances, we would have to go to the director of the Department of Agriculture, State of Michigan. He would have, he or she, I don't know if it's a he or she, would have to conduct a public hearing on this, even if we wanted to adjust, say, the number of hens or number of this. So it's just so cumbersome and it's unneeded. I really think it was a political stunt on the part of the representative who brought this in the first place, because it was at the time when everybody was complaining about the price of eggs. So anyway, I have no objection to having our own ordinance, but I think that, you know, if we're going to be, our townships have objected to green energy bills because it takes away power, the gravel pit regulation because it takes away power. Now they even want to get down to regulating how people keep chickens. So I think it's, I think we should send a letter, strongly worded letter, and then I also think we should make a recommendation to the township board, that the township board take a position on this too, because anything we send to them, if they were to approve it, it would be, it would be for naught if these bills are passed. Well, anyway, that's my, that's my two cents, actually my 28 cents.
Does everyone think about that? About the ordinance, or should we still keep a public hearing for this? Or I guess that's kind of...
Well, I think we should have an ordinance. I think we have people doing whatever they choose out there right now. And I think that we're surrounded by the city who has an ordinance, and Nagani Township who has an ordinance. And so we're just saying, and I know people are doing it, they, they're buying chickens and putting them in their yards, which is great, but there's no rules. We just went through this whole dog ordinance thing and are trying to tighten that up so people aren't fearful of who's going to come running at them. So I don't want any roosters, that's what I'll say, roosters are mean. As a child, they were mean.
And I will, on that note, most if not all, I would say all municipalities outlaw roosters.
Yep. So I think in keeping with our neighbors and things, and making sure that the chickens are safe from the coyote running down my road, I think we need to have people apply. I don't think that's a bad thing. And I don't think they should be selling. I mean, it says on most of them, onsite commercial sale of products is prohibited. So there can't be a small business. I don't know, I looked at all of these. I know the city, I have their application. They are a little tight, maybe, I don't know, Eric. They have to fill this out and there's a fee. And their structures are, if they have to build a new structure, they have to get a building permit, I would guess. You know, I think this, I think people think they can throw a box in the backyard and, with wood, a wooden box, and that's going to be their chicken coop. Well, that's not okay. Really, it's not. Although they do eat all the ticks, okay, so.
Well, any, any...
That's a plus.
Not any ordinance, but I think a well-written ordinance on this would include, as most well-written ones do, would include square footage minimum requirement for per chicken. I think in here, there are a lot of them, that's one or two square feet minimum per chicken in the coop, and then on the run, the space where they can get out in free range, has a square footage requirement as well. So there, I mean, there's plenty of ways to control and regulate, making sure that the size and location of the coops are appropriate. From what I've seen, I know Chocolate Township had their own kind of standalone chicken permit application, but most others just kind of folded their application process under their existing zoning compliance application, more so for location placement of the coop, making sure that setbacks were met and things like that, so.
I want the food in a safe place because I don't want to attract more animals. I want it, I want it to be fenced in, I don't want the chickens to go running out into the road. Okay, already people go too fast and I worry about the kids, but you know, someone be worrying about the chickens. We don't need chicken crossing signs, we already have deer crossing signs. I mean, you know, really, so. I would say Eric and Jason have the contacts to figure out a well-written ordinance. And so what if they have to pay $25 to have chickens? I mean, you know, that's a commitment. If you don't have to pay anything, we all know when you don't have to pay anything, people don't adhere to any rules. They don't show up for events, and if you have to pay something, you have a little skin in the game. I don't know what, Trowbridge Park has small lots, okay? So you're talking 60 by 120 in lots of Trowbridge. I mean, I don't think they need more than four chickens, is my opinion.
Yes, Jason and myself can certainly start putting together some proposed language and bring something back to you at the next meeting or meeting after that, as far as proposed language.
So what does everyone say?
And I, sorry to interrupt, but I think we would look for, if everybody's on board with sending that letter, I think it's a good idea. I think we'd be looking for a motion on that, so.
Can I ask a question? In Trowbridge Park, are the lots at least a quarter acre in size?
Mm-mm, mm-mm. So on the, on the east side of Ontario, the lots were 60 by 120. On the west side of Ontario, they were 80 by 120. Some people have 90, some people have 120, some people have, my son has 120 on the east side. So they are halter skelter, that's what I will say.
The reason I ask is that this House bill would prohibit any chickens in Trowbridge Park.
Correct.
So I'm...
Yeah, it's crazy, House bill.
I'm all with the power of this commission to expand our ordinance, because we already do allow chickens to be raised. It's fine. I'm just saying that we ought to do something about taking a position on these two bills because otherwise, you can do all this work and it's not going to mean it, you know.
Mm-hmm, so.
I don't mean a peck of corn.
No, I apologize if I misrepresented anything that you said in that email, so.
Oh, you don't apologize.
So can the planning commission, so this is my question, can the planning commission write a letter to the legislative people?
Sure, we're, we're, we're enacted, the Michigan zoning enabling act, we are a separate body, separate power.
So we can, so we can put...
I don't see why, well, I don't know, that's my opinion.
Jim, put sign it.
And that's something staff could draft up and have Jim sign and...
I guess I don't want to step on the township board's toes if it's up to them to do it and not up to us. I guess that's something I'm worried about.
You're thinking both can do it, though?
I think both can do it, I don't see...
So I can bring that to the board. I can bring it to the board and say the planning commission reviewed these bills and we feel, we feel strongly and we're going to write a letter, is that outside? Do you also want to write a letter to support not having these move? They're not going to move, I can tell you.
The letter isn't going to attack anybody, it's just going to say, we object to this, it usurps our power, our local power zone.
Mm-hmm, just like we did with gravel pits.
Right, I think that's important.
And the wind thing, or, yeah. I can bring that to them, I'll ask to be on the agenda.
With what you're saying, but I, I just don't know about protocol here.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, that's what I'm saying.
I understand. Or is Jim supposed to bring it?
I don't want anybody on the township board to get irritated with that.
How about if we draft, okay, how about if there's a motion made tonight to draft such a letter, for your signature as chairman of the planning commission, to, then, the motion would be to then give that recommendation to the, to bring that to the township for their approval, and ask them to send a similar letter.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't know if, I hear you saying we don't need their approval. Maybe it's just...
Well, I don't, I mean, I, you know, the Michigan zoning enabling act gives us independent power.
So how about if we just ask? Jason maybe has been around this block before?
I'll follow up with Jason also.
Why don't you just talk to Lynn about it, you know, instead of going through all the formal, you know, whatever stuff we have to go through?
Yeah, yeah, I think you have to ask Jason.
See if Lynn thinks about it, and if she's okay with it, then we'll do it, and if not, then we'll have the township board do it.
And then we personally can always send letters that we personally oppose things. So, but...
Okay, so I'll make, I'll make a motion, I make a motion that the planning commission staff draft the letter to Representative Bonak and Senator McBroom with a copy to all the sponsors of the bill, which are listed on the bill itself, stating that its position of the market township planning commission, that we oppose House Bills 4049 and 4050 because they usurp the power or, or an infringement on the power of our planning Period. And that after that letter is drafted for the signature of our chairman, that the staff take that letter to Supervisor Durant, get the okay or the nay, that we have the independent power to send that. And then if we do have the independent power to send that, then we'll send it, and we ask the township board to send a similar letter. That's the gist of my motion.
I'll support that.
All right. Could you repeat that, please?
No. It's, it's already like on video, right?
You get the, you get the gist of it.
All right, anymore, well, do you want a motion for you guys to draft, come up with an ordinance too?
No, I, I think we're, it's...
Just for the letter?
Yep.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I also think it would be a good idea if we did start getting just a draft of it.
Absolutely, yep.
Yeah. Okay, I'll go with you, Linda, you've got kind of...
Yeah, I'm excited to kind of move this forward and let our residents know that we're supporting the animal, whatever we called it.
Animal.
Animal keeping.
Backyard animal keeping.
Yeah, because, you know, people, you know, people are interested in that, and we just need to have a couple little rules that our new ordinance person can enforce.
All right, moving on to 7A, master plan update delay.
Yep, so unfortunately, we were actually expecting some of the text today, did not receive it. We do know that several of their staff members have gone on medical leave, among other medical reasons, so.
Several of them have?
What's that?
Several of them have?
Yes, so, really, no update. Says all I need to say right there, delay. So we will certainly keep you apprised once we know more, but like I said, we were expecting a couple chapters today and did not receive them, so maybe we'll have received them before the end of the week, but we will see, so.
We don't have any deadlines that we need to meet?
Yeah. Yeah, we do.
Yes, but I think it's, if I remember correctly, it's pretty far in the, pretty far in the future. I want to say like 2026, mid 2026 or something like that, so we've got, we've got some time, but it's important to keep it moving along too, so.
So I have a question.
Sure.
So last year, that group came to Community Day and talked with our residents, it's kind of a survey. Is there a way by August to have some information that we could post up about things that happened based on the plan? Well, just based on our plan. Keeping people updated on current information is really important, and that's a good venue to connect with young people with families.
Sure.
So if we can do a couple boards like that, that planning board down there, whatever, I can't even read that, isn't that terrible? Our priority goals, if we could do a couple of those, we could put those on the fence and direct people to that as an informational booth.
What day is Community Day?
It's August 2nd. Now, if it's not possible, it's not possible, but I think follow-up to something that happened is always a plus.
Yeah, we can, we can explore doing that.
Okay.
And kind of circling back to the backyard chickens discussion in context of this, Jason and myself do anticipate a few ordinance updates as a result of this master plan process. Like we know, not to speak for anybody, we've talked about kind of loosening up or kind of codifying a little bit more formally language on ABUs, and now we're talking about chickens, and so there's a few different things out there that I think our ordinance could use update-wise. And so in light of this master plan update, I think this will inform us on some of those, so.
We also have a blight ordinance that was hugely updated, that, you know, that's a good venue again to share that information. Thank you.
Yeah, so I have nothing more under the master plan update unless there are any other questions.
I guess I have a question, more of a comment, is there, well, maybe just a question instead. Is there anything we can do to, anything other than what we need from them to discuss so we can kind of not have to wait for them to, you know, get back in the game and then have to, you know, start going after they give us whatever?
Sure.
Is there anything we can start doing now before we get whatever we need from them?
As far as I'm aware, no, but I'll...
We can cover all the chapters in there, I know, you know, from before, and it's getting so long from that, that we're all kind of forgetting what that was all about.
Yeah, I will bring that up with Jason. We could put an item on the agenda for next meeting just to kind of talk about it again, more so than anything, if we don't have an update at that time. But yeah.
Have they given any date as to when they're going to get better?
Yeah, I really don't know.
I mean, this is, I don't know, it sounds odd to me, but they're still in business, right?
Yep, yep, as far as we know.
Okay. I know the county had to go down and pick up a bunch of autopsy reports because of this, so I was kind of thinking, hmm, all right, what's going on with that? But, all right, 7B, Michigan Association of Planning's Upper Peninsula Academy recap.
Yeah, so I think everyone was there, so I really feel like I don't need to kind of give a rundown on what was talked about as much, but we wanted to put this item on there just to maybe have, if there was any questions or discussion or follow-up type of stuff, we just wanted to put the agenda item on there, so.
I didn't make it back for the afternoon because of some work issues, but I did go through everything and, or read everything that was on there, so.
Yep, yeah, I thought it was, and they usually do, the Michigan Association of Planning or whatever they're called nowadays, the APA Michigan, they always do a good job, but I thought the presentations were well put together, good information, especially for elected and appointed officials. A great turnout for a UP academy, as they call it, so, yeah.
I think there were 82, they said?
Yeah, that's pretty good.
No correspondence? We have Linda here for the township board report.
Well, it's been quiet. Renovari has until September, they're trying to get all their ducks in a row, I'll call it. So hopefully, they will be able to do that. So yeah, not a lot going on.
Okay.
Do you guys get all the minutes, right? Yep. Or you can watch us in person, yeah.
Okay, any rec committee report?
Nope, they did not meet this month.
All right. And planning and zoning report?
Yeah, just a few things on, let's see, it was last Friday, the new DJ Jacobetti groundbreaking ceremony was, well, just up the hill here. well, just up the hill here, uh, myself, Lenny Bodinas, the public works director, superintendent of public works and, uh, manager Kengus all attended. Uh, I do have a program here that's got a list of speakers and stuff if people are interested, uh, coffee stains, so apologies for that, but it was a good event, cold rainy morning, but, uh, well attended and, uh, it'll be exciting to see the progress up there, so. Yeah, as you can probably see driving by in forty one, that demolition at the former Jasmine Restaurant property site is under, well underway as of the last couple days. They were ripping up the asphalt in front yesterday and I think one of the buildings down, is down already today. Um, so they're moving along there and then last thing I wanted to mention, and a couple of you were there as well, uh, but I think last week, uh, Citizens for a Safe and Clean Lake Superior, uh, held a luncheon on wetlands in the UP and, uh, how local municipalities can better, uh, regulate them. The State Department Eagle only regulates wetlands five acres or more, so anything five acres or less kind of gets left up to the locals and, uh, kind of in light of talking about backyard chickens, kind of the same thing, some, some municipalities account for them, account for wetlands in their ordinances and some don't. Um, and so the, it was a, I thought a very interesting presentation, uh, heard from an MTU biologist who kind of gave all the background on the science of wetlands, which a lot of the stuff was new to me. And then, uh, Brad Newman from Michigan State Extension, uh, he's an outreach coordinator, outreach education, I forget his title, but he had some good pointers as far as, uh, what local governments can and should do. So, and I would encourage anybody else who was there to comment on it if they want.
I thought your, your comment, Eric, uh, you, you were, I, you were the only one that followed the instructions and brought the I didn't, but you, you made a comment that under Article twenty, section twenty thirteen of our code, where there's definitions of body of water in terms of setbacks, that, that could be tweaked to include by definition wetlands and that would offer some additional protection.
Yeah, I think the, the current intention of that subsection is more so for probably Lake Superior front is property, but I think beyond just tweaking the definition, maybe some further language tweaks within that section could account for some of that, some of the things we were talking about.
Good activation.
So can we do that? Can we ask the staff to bring back some stuff? Because I felt that was a really valuable, um, workshop to attend and the thing that was really, um, I guess shocking to me is how many wetlands have been destroyed. I, I mean, I think about bulldozers burying creeps and, and so how, how can we add that and then move forward? It's not gonna happen overnight, right?
No, no.
So...
It's kind of similar to what we've done with the chickens and then the solar, I, we can put some information together as far as what municipalities around us are doing. I can certainly reach out to Brad Newman. I mean, he was there giving the presentation on, here's some language that you can use and here's what other places have done, so, I mean, he's always a great resource. Um, so I can reach out to him and kind of get started on that too, so.
Cause I did see, I did look online and charter townships in Michigan are addressing it, so I think we want to address it sooner than later. So that would be my recommendation if that's, do you need a motion or just a?
No, I don't think so.
Danny?
I think that is...
More work, Eric.
We're gonna be adjusting some of the ordinance provisions anyway.
Yeah.
You know, chicken stains, uh, or something else you mentioned.
EDUs.
EDU, so that could be an item that we could work on.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, visible things for our community, if you think of it that way. Those are things they see, things they hear about, things that we're doing something about.
And it's, uh, kind of to add to that, it's stuff like this that, not to say that setbacks and height limits and stuff like that are important, but it's stuff like this that really affects people.
Yep.
So.
You know, one other thing, uh, going back, this is kind of backing up to the meeting that we all attended. It was in the afternoon session, so maybe you missed it, Jim, or maybe it was in the morning, I can't remember, but I think it was in the afternoon. They were, the topic of affordable housing seemed to be a theme that went through the whole day. And then, uh, I asked about what you could do in terms of, uh, negotiating in terms of, uh, with a land developer, uh, based on language in your ordinance and based on language in your master plan. And that seemed to get some good vibes from some of the people. They were interested in what you could do and I think Brad Newman mentioned something about inclusionary zoning. So that if you have, for example, uh, well, just for our township, fifty seven percent of the people that took our survey said that protecting natural environment was a good idea, a very important idea. And then in our master plan, we have, uh, already we have, uh, talk about, uh, natural features. It's important to protect wetlands, it's important. But I think what he was getting at was, can you, uh, do things in your actual zoning code? Like, for example, under the PUD requirements to have very specific things that you can rely on when you're asking the developer to say, for example, set aside ten percent for, uh, affordable housing. So I did some research on the Ann Arbor code, which is, uh, it's really a good written code. They, they, they have, uh, PUD districts and I'm not sure how that translates to what we do here. But in their PUD, uh, requirements, like we have our PUD section thirteen that we always refer to, PUDs, they actually have, uh, provisions for a certain percentage being set aside for affordable housing. Not a whole lot, but, you know, percentage. And they also have things like rebates of fees. If you're gonna do affordable housing, the, the developer gets reduction in fees. So anyway, then we had, uh, also the other day, Linda and I, uh, attended this presentation by, was it Martin Homes?
Um, it was, it was the people from, not it's Jackson.
I, I was there as well.
Yeah, Eric was there actually too, yeah.
Yeah, a hundred homes and a, a hundred homes. Isn't that what it was?
Yeah, and Lynn was there and then, so following that, we were asking Lynn, well, what do we have in market township? Cause they, in Jackson, they own the land, the town, the city owned the land, so I was asking Lynn, well, what do we own? And so other than the wellhead, we do have a two, two acre property in Middle Island Point. So we were talking about, well, could you, we're, we're forbidden as a township, charter township, from giving free uh, hookup, for example, sewer hookup. But Lynn seemed like she was kind of open to the idea of exchanging value for value. Like if you had a piece of property that's worth a certain value, maybe you could, uh, have it appraised and say, well, you know, okay, so one third of this property is worth a hundred thousand dollars. What is the construction cost to a developer for a hundred thousand dollars worth of affordable housing? So anyway, I, those, I'm not even, that's kind of way in the future, but we still have Renovari to get through, so. I thought that was an interesting, what did you think, Linda?
I thought that was a great workshop and, uh, what I heard from that workshop is that we need to speed up the process of getting permits through. And so I think there were county people there and the county is where lots of the permitting comes from. And why does it taking Renovari so long to get their permits through? Why does it take all of us so long to get permits through? Is there something we can do to speed it up? So hopefully the county, um, area, whatever their department's called, um, was able to relook at why it takes so long. Why does it take so long?
What was your take on that, Eric?
I mean, I can't, I can't speak for county's processes.
Right, we don't know, yeah.
Um, I mean, I can speak for myself, though I usually try, if I got a single family home application in front of me, I'm usually trying to get to it day of or the next day. Um, if it's a fence or a shed or something more minor like that, I'm getting to it probably within the hour or two. Um, just cause those are relatively easy to review, um, obviously as long as I'm not in the middle of something else too important. But yeah, I mean, that, it was all, uh, the program itself that they talked about, the hundred homes in the city of Jackson, um, it was impressive, obviously, it's up here, my, one of my thoughts was obviously it's the city of Jackson, I don't know the population, um, but up here.
Thirty one thousand.
Okay, uh, up here, at least the work that has been done so far on this issue, it's been from kind of a regional county approach. So I think, how does that example from Jackson translate to us here in the county? Obviously, the, the answer is the county. Um, I do know the land bank kind of does some of that, has done some of that work in the past. Um, obviously that they don't have the volume that the city of Jackson is doing as far as the one hundred homes. But they are involved in some of that work, so.
They were, they were able to build a twelve hundred square foot.
Right, for a hundred seventy...
Sell it for a hundred seventy five thousand.
I know, cause they got
Beautiful home.
Twenty five thousand dollars came off the down payment. Someone, it was a grant, twenty five thousand dollars. It, it was very interesting.
They, they were pretty imaginative, you know, they, innovative.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Mm-hmm, anyways, so it's exciting and, you know, Renovari builds forty five housing units. Wow, that's halfway, that's almost halfway to a hundred. If the county, the county's probably built that many. I think we can, I think we can do lots of things if we put ourselves all together and let the county manage some of these things. Do, do you know, I mean, if, you just have to be innovative, okay?
I, I agree that not to put the onus on them and say that it's their, their responsibility, cause it's certainly our responsibility too, but I think again, anything that's accomplished here will prob, likely be done from a regional approach and it's gonna be them naturally that leads that regional approach.
But you're the team. If you think about it as a team, I can tell you, community day would not happen if I didn't have a team and all the buildings and things around here won't happen if you don't have a team. The financer, the builder, the people that do the permitting and someone who wants to own the house. Really. We got it. We got it here.
Well, if you think about all the hoops all the developers have to jump through to, you know, to get to the point of actually starting to build, I mean, it's
Yeah, that's what they said, right, Eric? That's what they were talking about.
Township, county, state.
craziness, yeah.
Yeah, and the county, unless you don't call them early in the morning when they're there and they go out on the job site, like for inspectors, you know, you have to wait till five o'clock at night for them to come back and call you back and then if you don't answer the phone right away, so I've gone through this, then you miss the whole day and you have to wait on the next day.
Okay.
So that's what we need to streamline.
And, and they won't, they don't give you a cellphone that you can call them when they're all, you know, wherever, which I think they should, but they said, no, we don't do that, so it's like, all right, I guess we'll wait till five, but.
Hmm, well, anyway, so I was happy to attend that, um, free event and hopefully there'll be more.
Uh, anything else with planning and zoning?
Nope.
Anything with long year? I've kind of been waiting to, you know, they were talking about starting before and all of a sudden it's like stopped again.
No, no substantial updates or changes that we've been made aware of. Um, I have heard through the grapevine, they've had some staff turnover. Um, I think they've changed in engineering firms, there's, there's been some changeover on their end of things that may have delayed it beyond what it's already delayed, so.
Yeah, it's about done. If I think it's gonna go on this year, then, you know, you're lost, but. Okay, um, anyone else have any questions for Eric or we move on? Nope. Announcements?
Next meeting, June eleventh.
Okay. Any more public comment? I see we have a new public out there. I don't know if you wanted to comment, but.
Yeah, animal control ordinance amendments were sent to the paper today, so when that gets published, it's, it's effective immediately.
Oh, okay, we were just talking about animal stuff.
I got sent to the paper today, so hopefully it gets posted within, by Saturday.
And then we'll put it on our website, right? Because I, I don't get, yeah, I don't get the paper.
It's on there, it's there already, but it will be effective immediately upon publication, so.
Okay. And the blight ordinance is already in effect, Eric?
Yes, as far as I'm aware, yeah.
Okay. And, and they are finalizing a job description, I forgot to tell you that, so we can hire a person.
I think the job description's finalized, the, uh, hiring committee, I think, approved it or recommended it for approval before the board, so I think it's just up to the board at this point.
So that'll probably happen the first meeting in June. Yeah.
I heard there are signs up at Wolf Press Kyle and probably elsewhere about keeping your dogs on leashes or there's a four hundred fifty dollar fine or whatever, so.
Ooh.
Yeah.
Wow.
You don't own that, though.
Yeah, that's the, well, that is, is that state land?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, maybe the states, well, the state has a, that is a state law, isn't it?
Mm-hmm, always has been.
Yeah, mm-hmm. We need a few more signs at the park and the ball field that says no dogs.
You know, there's a dog on five fifty just across from, from, uh, from Phil's that is the best behaved dog I've ever seen. It just sits there, traffic is going by, it doesn't get rattled, it's, it's right in his own yard. It doesn't, I don't know, maybe they have electric fence or something, it's like, man, that doesn't well behave a dog.
Maybe they do have a fence, yeah.
Uh, oh, one thing I wanted to bring up was, I don't know if all of you saw this, about Andrew being on the, uh, Invest UP, I think it is now, and for getting grants and money for local municipal government, so.
She's gonna stay on the, on the land bank?
I don't, oh, on land bank, uh, well, she's with the county anymore now, so she must have retired from the county, so. Yeah. So.
Good, great.
Comes to getting grants, you know, for, that's what she's there for now. Good. Okay, any additional comments from questioners? Nope.
Were we, um, did I miss something? Were we gonna do anything for former Commissioner Steve? Were we gonna send him something for service or no?
Well, we were gonna...
He must not have been here for, uh, that meeting.
Was that the one? The one I was on.
That was me.
Good.
But did we actually send Steve Hagan, Hagan a letter?
That was what Jason said he was gonna do, yeah.
But I didn't see it. Did it go out?
As far as I'm aware, yes. I don't think I was at that meeting either, but I can confirm that something did, yeah.
Would you, would you, uh, send us a copy of that letter?
Sure.
Sure, I'd like to see what it is.
Actually, I think it was, uh, Lynn Durant that brought it up when she was at one of her meetings and.
Yeah, and then I just, I forgot, I just didn't see anything, so.
Okay, Linda, do you have any comments?
Nope.
All right. Meeting adjourned at eight oh nine.